Hello, can everyone hear me? Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Curtis Fernandez and I am the community organizer for Asian Pacific Islander American, or APIA Vote Michigan. Before we get started, I do want to let everyone know that today's event is being livestreamed on Facebook. Again, I'm with APIA Vote Michigan. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots organization committed to justice and equity for the entire Asian-American community through grassroots mobilization. Our impact in the APIA community involves increasing voter registration, advocating for our public policy, providing census education, assisting with citizenship applications, developing youth leadership, and building coalitions. We work to ensure all people of color can exercise their right to vote, to vote, and make sure their voice is heard. We have hosted candidate forums in different cities where we felt it was important to make sure a diverse community has a voice, and that's why we're here in Lathrop Village. We came to host in Lathrop Village today because Lathrop Village is a vibrant and diverse community, and because we felt the need to create a platform and give our diverse community an opportunity to get to know those who work for us as the first line of government. We believe that municipal elections are just as important as national elections, if not more, so these forums are essential for civic engagement. We appreciate the support we received from the city to host this candidate forum. Special thank you and shout out to our mayor, Mayor Garrett, for welcoming us to Lathrop I hope that you all will get to learn something new about the candidates tonight, and also ask any questions you may have to help you make informed decisions when you cast your votes. Thank you again, and I would like to turn it over and introduce it to Kermit Williams, who is the executive director at Oakland Forward, and a great partner in this event. Kermit?
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. That almost sounds like Lathrop Village. I am so honored to be here today. I have the distinct honor of recognizing all the elected officials in the audience. So if you are an elected official, please stand up at this time, and then shout out your name so it can be picked up. Okay, we'll start way in the back with that gentleman.
Councilman Ian Ferguson.
Okay, Councilman Ian Ferguson, okay. Thank you for being here. Alright, who's next?
Hi, everybody. My name is Kamisha Gann, and I'm a Oakland County District Court Judge.
Judge Kamisha Gann, Oakland County.
Afternoon. Now, Yolanda Charles, Oakland County Commissioner, District Attorney.
Yes. We have already introduced your illustrious mayor, Mayor Kelly Garrett, so give her one more applause. So I do have one question, though, because this is a forum, and I know some of these people are running for the first time, so if anybody can tell me about, that's an elected official who can tell me about their forum experience, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Okay, I'm gonna call him the judge.
Well, I ran for district court that covered Lathrop Village. I'm sorry. I ran for 46 district court judges in 2016 and 2018, before I got appointed to the circuit court bench in 2019, so I have a lot of experience with forums, and it gives the citizens the opportunity to get to know the candidates, and it also tests the candidates' endurance. You are asked a lot of questions that the citizens want to know, and, you know, being able to answer questions of your constituents on the spot is a valuable experience, and also kind of gives you a test drive of what it would be like when you're in elected office. So, you know, I say good luck to all the candidates. Some of the questions you probably are going to be prepared for, and some of the questions you won't be prepared for, but that's going to make you the better candidate and the better elected official when they end it. So, good luck to you, and, you know, do your best.
Alright, let's give it up again for Judge Gann. So the question of the day is, are you guys ready to get started?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna hear from two more people, and then they're gonna get started. So again, let's make some noise for our next person.
Thank you, Kermit. At this point, I would like to introduce Roland Leggett, our political director at Michigan United, who is a great partner in this event.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I know you were not here to, you did not come today to hear from me, so I'll keep this short. Just wanted to say hello. As he was saying, my name is Roland Leggett. I'm the movement political director at Michigan United and Michigan People's Campaign. We're really excited to partner with the city and with API today on this really important event, and to echo what the judge said earlier, I wish the candidates the best of luck. This is one of the things that I love most about democracy, is the participation between candidate, elected official, and the people that they're representing. So have a great forum, and if you have any questions about Michigan United, feel free to give me a nudge, and I'm happy to connect you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Roland. It is always an honor to work with Michigan United. Now, I would like to introduce our moderator for today, who will facilitate the rest of the event. Bilal Hamood is the Public Engagement Associate for the Michigan Department of State. He was appointed by Secretary of State Joyceland Benson as the first Arab-American to work in the executive office. His efforts are centered around public education programs and statewide resource creation for identification and election accessibility. Bilal chairs the Secretary of State's Language Access Task Force to improve language access in Michigan. Beginning his career in academia, he serves as a data-driven advocate in southeast Michigan, receiving the contributor of the year award from the Michigan League of Conservation Voters for his environmental and education work. With degrees in public health and neuropsychology from Wayne State University, Bilal Hamood served as the project manager for the city of Sheboygan and community engagement liaison with Forgotten Harvest. Bilal currently serves on several nonprofit boards, including Reaching Children, United Humanitarian Foundation, and Dema for Humanity. Thank you. How's everyone doing today? Come on, give me a little bit more energy. We're about to get started. Yeah, the fun's about to start. So I want to start off by thanking Michigan United and APIA Vote for hosting us here today. Without them, we wouldn't be able to bring everyone here together, and all the city staff also who is making this possible, so that we can connect with these candidates and better understand why they want to serve us. So, without further ado, I really want to just dive right into it. So let me give you an idea of what the structure's gonna look like today, both for your sake and the candidates. So, we're gonna start off with introductions, about three minutes each. Give everyone an opportunity to really showcase who they are, and give us a broad overview of their, you know, their personal beliefs, and why they want to do something like run for office. Now, I'm gonna be keeping a tight ship, so we'll be giving you guys the duration of those three minutes, and then finish your sentence, you know, but I don't want to be, I don't want to be disgracing anyone's time here. Let's be respectful of your other candidates of the residents here who came out and are spending their afternoon on a Saturday to get more civically engaged. So first of all, can we give a round of applause for everyone who showed up? Come on, good job, guys. Really appreciate you coming out. And secondly, ground rule number two, we're gonna be asking our questions, we're gonna limit it to two minutes per answer for the questions that are come out. We're gonna have three introductory questions to get to know the candidates a little bit more, a little bit more generic, broad questions to get to know their personal beliefs, and then we're gonna be opening it up to the audience. If you have not yet, please grab a flashcard. These are going to be the way that you can participate as an audience member and ask your questions to the candidates here today. Now, Kermit, who you saw earlier, will be going around and collecting these flashcards, and you'll have the opportunity to, you know, ask your question and share your perspective to all the candidates here today. So, who's ready to get started? Alright. Now, the first question that we have, and I'm gonna be starting with you, Karen, if you don't mind, is please provide three initiatives that you would put forth to improve the current state. I apologize, we're gonna do an introduction first, yeah, yeah. Please start with your introduction, Karen, and let us know who you are.
Thanks so much for hosting us. My name's Karen L. Miller. Lathrop Village, often called the hidden jewel of Oakland County by those that live here, is a wonderfully diverse place to call home. As a longtime resident, I've spent much of my adult life extolling virtues, building community, and advocating for residents. As a city council member, I promise to use my years of experience bringing people back together, listen and be responsive, collaborate by actively seeking input from residents, practice fiscal responsibility, and act as a public servant, not a politician. My personal and professional experience will be an asset to rebuilding a sense of community. My track record speaks for itself. I have made it my life's work to seek equity and fairness, connect people with resources, advocate for those who may not otherwise have a voice, develop progressive programs and initiatives that benefit the greater good, and build relationships and partnerships for the sake of progress. My involvement with the Fair Housing Center, fighting redlining in Oakland County, inspired me to become a licensed Realtor 17 years ago, taking a pledge against housing discrimination and helping clients realize the American dream of owning a home. I have owned multiple businesses, including one with which I helped more than 47 Black and Brown entrepreneurs in metro Detroit start businesses of their own. In addition to earning a degree in community development and public administration in 2014, I was a full-time volunteer in Southfield Public Schools from 1986 to 2010. During that time, elected by the residents of Lathrop Village and Southfield, I served for 14 years on the Southfield Public Schools Board of Education, with five of those years as president, overseeing an annual budget of $100 million plus. I spent 25 years leading parent groups at McIntyre Elementary, Stevenson Elementary, Bernie Middle School, and Southfield-Lathrop High School. I was inducted into the inaugural class of the Southfield Public Schools Legacy Hall of Fame as a warrior for education in 2018. I contributed as a member of the Lathrop Village Planning Commission from 2014 to 2019, and I helped to resurrect the Lathrop Village Supper Club, a community organization started 77 years ago to promote community fellowship. Over the last few years, community cohesiveness has suffered, and I regularly hear residents express frustration over issues that I feel could have been prevented or handled differently by city leadership. A road millage that was defeated by over 60% of voters was very divisive, and there have been no attempts made to heal our community. On multiple occasions, hundreds of residents have attempted to get through to city council by organizing and submitting petitions that should have sent a clear message to council members. I recognize and appreciate how challenging and thankless public service can be, but I remain committed to the prospect that our city leadership can and must do better for all of our residents. Everyone deserves to be heard. I cherish the rich diversity of Lathrop Village. I've spent years actively celebrating, promoting, and supporting our beloved community. As a Realtor, a Southfield Public Schools board member, and involved parent and resident as a community activist, now I promise to continue doing that as a Lathrop Village City Council member, and will do whatever possible to make Lathrop Village better than ever for all of our existing and future neighbors.
Thank you, Karen. Up next, we have Saleem.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for coming out. You hear me okay? So my name is Saleem Siddiqui. For some of you that don't know me, I know quite a few of you, but hello to everyone that I don't know. So I am on the city council right now, I'm a city council member. It's great to be on that city council. I've been on since 2018, I believe. I was appointed to Mayor Frank Brock's seat as he retired, and then I won election in the next election in 2019. So it's been a great experience being on the city council. My way of background, I'm a CPA by profession. My family, my wife and I, and our kids have lived here, my wife and I have for over 25 years now, have seen this city grow and continue to be a diverse and wonderful city. We've seen great improvements recently in our infrastructure and in our services that we offer, and we hope to continue to provide those services. So, I'm gonna keep it brief. I mean, I see myself as someone that just is another resident, you know, I'm just like you guys, living here and want to help, you know, I like to think of myself as someone that likes to help people. We do as much as we can, you know, in our community, my wife and I, in our Muslim community, in our Lathrop Village community, we try to help out wherever we can, and that's what I want to do. That's why I'm on city council. I have no other agenda, really. I'm just here to help. I'm here to listen to what the residents want. That's always been my MO, is like, what do we want? What do our people want to do? And if they want to do something, then as long as it's legal and not, doesn't cause harm, then I'm all for it. So that's kind of who I am, and, you know, happy to run again, and I think we have some great candidates here, and we'll hear from them, and, you know, I just want to thank everyone else for coming out today as well. Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hello. My name is Greg Ruvalo II. If you don't have a card, I'll pass one out to you later. I'm a write-in candidate, not that one. I'm a write-in candidate for the two-year term for the city council. First of all, thank you to the APIA for organizing the event. This is a great resource for all voters. Also, thank you to my fellow candidates who are here today. It's great to meet everybody in person, as opposed to being on camera on Zoom. Jalen is a lot taller than I thought he would be. But most importantly, thank you to the residents who are here, taking an active role in learning about our local government and our candidates. That will soon shape the future of our city. My husband and I are 16-year residents of Lathrop Village, and there's no other place that we'd rather live. Our roots run deep within the city. My 25-year marketing and communications experience has positioned me to be a leader within the community, to be highly transparent, to work well with people at all levels, and to listen with accuracy. These are all transferable skills needed for a city council seat. A good listener is a good, a good leader is a good listener. I hold a bachelor's degree in communications, master's degree in communications technology, both from Eastern Michigan University, and I'm running for city council to bring a new voice and new ideas to the city's leadership. I want to build on that foundation for current residents and for future generations, and that's why I ask you to write in Ruvalo for the two-year term on November 2nd. Thank you.
Hey, everyone, thanks for being here today. My name is Mark Dizik, and I'm a four-year candidate for city council in the horse race election. I want to thank the Michigan United and the APIA Vote for having us here today, and thanking you all for your turnout. I'm a 40-year resident of Lathrop Village. I grew up on Kilburnee. I swam at the swim club. I moved back here after college. I had a condo on the Service Drive, now my wife and son. We live at the end of Bungalow at Rainbow Drive in Rainbow Circle. We chose Lathrop because of its diversity, because of the unique homes, and most importantly, the special feel of our city. I'm a former small business owner. I'm currently employed as an associate with Beer and Wine Wholesale in the state of Michigan. I'm licensed by the state to distribute products. And I'm a candidate here in Lathrop, looking to balance the preservation of our city's character with the inevitable progress that we need to see, and just be a good steward for our town for the next 40 years and hopefully longer. Please vote for me in that four-year horse race, and I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, speaking of races, this is gonna be a race to see if my voice lasts for the two hours of this event, because it's been fading fast, but first, I do want to start out by thanking APIA Vote for doing this and supporting democracy, and want to thank everybody for coming out, and thank everybody for coming out on a Saturday afternoon. My name is Bruce Cantor, and I grew up in our community. I'm a product of Southfield Lathrop Schools, and have been a homeowner in Lathrop Village for the last 32 years. I retired several years ago from the healthcare field, and wanted to give back to the community I love, so I ran for office. I was elected four years ago, and I served on city council all four years as the mayor pro tem. During that time, I also served on the planning commission and helped bring businesses to the city. I also founded and chaired the infrastructure committee that's brought residents new roads, reconditioned ditches, and a host of water and sewer-related improvements that will help to stabilize and upgrade our outdated infrastructure. Looking back, I'm extremely proud to say that I fulfilled all my campaign promises that I made four years ago. This often required making difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions, but I was able to get the job done so Lathrop Village could move forward and grow. I look forward to another four years and putting my time and energy towards new city initiatives.
Thank you. And our final candidate, Jalen.
Yes, it is he, okay. So those are some great resumes to follow up after, so how about we just give everyone a round of applause? That's really great. So clearly, I'm the youngest one here, and so I don't think my resume is as extensive, but I'm gonna list it out for you. So I am Jalen Jennings. I am a resident of Lathrop Village. I've lived here since the age of two, so I'm a proud product of Southfield Public Schools. I also graduated from Tennessee State University with a degree in urban planning, where I now work for Detroit City Council as a policy analyst. So I have great experience with working with evaluating budgets and community outreach. I actually hosted a coffee hour this morning, so I was able to reach a lot of the residents through different technology and mailing. So I'm just here, excited to help and serve my community. I don't want to go before, be before you long, but I'm here to help, I'm here to serve, and I'm here to listen to you all. That's why I plan to host coffee hours and plan to reach out to you through different technologies such as text messaging, which many of you may have got some of my text messages already. So thank you for having me, and it's been a pleasure, and I hope to count on your support for November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you all for those great introductions. I appreciate you guys coming out here. I do want to also offer the condolences of one of the candidates who was unable to join us, Marvin Moore, and I'll be reading off their introduction, since they will not be able to be in attendance. So, this is a message from Marvin. Hello, fellow Lathrop Village residents. I'm so sorry to miss the important opportunity to meet with you. However, I am at an important prior commitment, which I must honor. I am active in community service. Earlier this week, I delivered loaded book bags for homeless kids at COTS, an organization that helps displaced families. Today, I'm assisting a young Detroit mother with a six-month-old and a three-year-old who have been living in a land-grant home for several months with no running water or bathroom facilities. We are replacing the water pipes and installing a bathroom. It is important that I honor my commitments despite any inconvenience to me. Despite my absence, please know I'm fully committed to Lathrop Village, a place I've probably called home for over 30 years. I love this small community and will work hard to advance the concerns of its residents. I will be honest and transparent in governing, and will always keep the vitality, security, welfare, and comfort of Lathrop Village on my top priorities. These are some of my reasons for running for council. I am not a politician, but I am invested in members of our community. I will be attentive to you, our residents, and aggressively seek your input in decision-making. After all, as a public servant, my job is to serve you. I will use town hall meetings and technology to invite and increase communication with you, Lathrop Village residents. Each voice is important and should be heard. I will also employ tools to keep you fully informed and timely respond to your inquiries. I will also work on increasing the efficiency of city services. Notably, our city's administrative costs have nearly doubled within the past few years without any appreciable increase in city services. And finally, I will work to maintain the peace and tranquility of our city, which includes the exclusion of marijuana dispensaries in the city. Change is good, but not all change is good. One example is Southfield's rejection of a Walmart store on Southfield Road. I would advocate that our city opt out of marijuana dispensaries, consistent with our wishes of a substantial number of Lathrop Village residents. Police chiefs from other communities have expressed concerns about increased traffic and accompanying issues with marijuana dispensaries that may interfere with the peace and tranquility of our small community. If you share my concerns and vision, I humbly ask that you join me and write in Marvin Moore for a full-term position on the Lathrop Village City Council. For more information, please review our webpage, votelv2021.com. Thank you. Alright, so because we started with you before Karen, we're gonna start with Jalen on these questions. So, Jalen, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Question number one for all of you here today. Please provide three initiatives that you would put forth to improve the current state of city services. If time allows, please touch on your strategy for implementing one of them. I remind you all, you have two minutes to answer these questions.
Sure, thank you so much for that question. So three of my initiatives would be, first, calming Lathrop's traffic, and then I would like to implement wellness checks, and as well as an internship program. I believe these three things are key to our city, helping our city services. One thing I would like to implement, and how I plan to implement it, would be our roads and calming the traffic. So I believe if we leverage grants, we need to, cities, small and large, look into grants and leveraging those resources. So my plan is to reach out, which I have already done, is reach out to our Michigan Department of Transportation, their pedestrian coordinator. They, you can reach out to your coordinator, and you can have, you know, develop a relationship with them, and they will provide you with grants yearly that are, could be applicable to your community, and I think that would be a great resource to have to hopefully calm some of the traffic down, which I have, which many people have let me know, has been an issue while I have been canvassing the neighborhood. So that is one initiative I would like to put forward. Lastly, I just want to say something about the internship program. I think it would be a cool thing to do to allow high schoolers to have volunteer experience, to maybe come throughout the summertime to work with some of our city services, to help with some of our overgrown areas that are considered city-owned, and I would like to, I think that would be something to push the city forward, and make sure people know about the city, and also just maybe help residents and other things like that. So I'm gonna stop now, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Jalen. Now, before we move on to you, Bruce, I just want to let you know that your beacon for accountability is going to be my colleague Curtis. As you have one minute left, he will flag you down with one minute, so just look to Curtis if you're ever sure, uncertain on how much time you might have left. Without further ado.
Alright, well, in my first four years on city council, I conducted several very large citywide initiatives, including a road millage to repave seven miles of road and their associated ditches, a bond issue to make a variety of improvements to our water and sewer system, and a sidewalk program that will bring all sidewalks up to code in the next three years. I've worked hard to address some of our city's biggest issues, but I still have many other initiatives I'd like to focus on. For example, our three-year infrastructure program is an aggressive start to address the infrastructure issue, but it really just scratches the surface. I'd like to work on securing additional funds without burdening the taxpayers so that we can expand its limited focus. So for example, we just secured a $200,000 grant for sewer maintenance from the state. There are grants available for lead remediation. The federal government is working on a $1 trillion infrastructure package that would help us, that could potentially help us immensely. In fact, I would actually propose to hire a dedicated grant writer to focus on securing these kind of grants, which is a position that could very easily pay for itself. Another initiative would be to focus upon improving Southfield Road, and here's how I would do that. First, we can continue going after the low-hanging fruit by using the increased code enforcement resources that I was able to secure. We started this effort earlier this summer, and it's already starting to have an effect. Second, we need to more broadly communicate some of our DDA programs, such as sign grants and facade grants to existing businesses. This is an easy and inexpensive way to make some aesthetic improvements. Third, we need to, we need to leverage our redevelopment-ready community status to market new businesses to our empty storefronts. Fourth, we need to address the biggest issue cited by current and former businesses, and that's slowing down the traffic on Southfield Road. This is one of the primary goals of the Boulevard project. However, until this happens, we need to aggressively police the speed. I initiated a trial speed reduction program last winter that worked very well and should be expanded. Lastly, we need to find a way to persuade the existing building owner of the historic Annie Lathrop School to stop using the property. of the historic Annie Lathrop School to stop using the property as a tax write-off and redevelop it. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Tysik again. Nice to talk with you again about this great topic, because I don't think a community of 4,000 people has any problem with ideas. I think we have a lot of great ideas, Bruce's ideas, Jalen's ideas. These are all great ideas, and there are a lot of ideas that are already on the table. As your councilman, my job would be to evaluate the impediments to our progress and eliminate them. I think initiatives are great, but what's stopping us from getting things done? And our role as city council can, you know, be magnified when we're effective in getting the projects that are already on the table off the table. The Southfield Road Boulevard project is a great project. It's been out there forever. What's stopping us from moving it along? Let's work together to find the causes for the delays and approach them systematically and thoroughly. Bruce was right on, you know. We need to find a way, whether it's with our DDA or with civic engagement or with our town hall, to incentivize our business owners here to provide a more aesthetically pleasing frontage for our community, slowing the traffic down, whatever we can do as citizens here. What are the barriers to our communication, evaluating those and overcoming those? If there were to be one initiative that I think we could actually actively take that all could be engaged in is improving the way we communicate with one another personally and communicating with one another through city hall and our residents and communicating with your city council. That communication, being civil and thorough and as good stewards for our community, would be the most important thing that we could do to eliminating these barriers to having our best ideas move forward. Thank you.
So the three initiatives that I would focus on under my councilmember position would be communication, beautification, and transparency. So let me expand on my communication plan. Communication channels are crucial to keep our residents updated and informed. So we currently have some very effective tools in place, like our weekly e-newsletter, our quarterly publication, Your Town, LVTV, our social media channels, the recently implemented, well, last year, the See Click Fix app, email blasts, and our website. So I feel that we can expand on these tools to include channels that meet the needs of multi-generational residents. For example, I would consider, it's not a new concept, but an opt-in text messaging system for residents who wish to receive their information that way. I would also consider a dedicated phone number that residents could call for, let's say, an updated, recorded message. It would be a call-to-listen message to hear briefings on specific topics or announcements or meeting notifications. Also targeted emails on specific targets that residents can sign up for. Again, an opt-in or an opt-out situation. And maybe even, thinking outside of the box, putting a digital display in front of city hall that has specific key topics and events on it that would replace printed banners. I feel that communication is key to a well-run and transparent community. The more channels that we can utilize, implement and utilize, the better that our residents will be informed. So also, as we get, as we need, we also need to recognize the communications channel in both ways. They go both ways. Not only do we need to push information, but we need to get information, right? It's a two-way communication street. So connecting with residents is valuable, is a valuable way to gain feedback. A few new ideas include making feedback cards available in city hall. Does that mean my time's up? Okay, I'll wrap up. Having a link on the online feedback forum for the weekly newsletter or having a dedicated hotline where residents can simply leave a message. No conversation, just leave a message with feedback. Also, ask residents to sign up to receive a phone call on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. I'm gonna call you and I'm gonna ask your opinion. I'm gonna get your feedback. And I'm getting the, we'll talk later.
Would you like me to, thank you. I feel like I haven't repeated the question in a while. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, no, I got it.
All right.
And the only negative part about going down this line is everyone takes all your ideas and talks about them. So I agree 100% with what everything Greg just said, because that was first on my list, communication. And also, Jalen mentioned it, and Mark mentioned it, and Bruce probably did too. So 100% agree, and those were great ideas that Greg has. The only thing I might add that maybe I didn't hear was just, even physical signs and banners are good in the neighborhood for announcing events and publishing meetings and things like that. And so, and just quickly, I'll just comment on communication. I think it's important because I feel like some of the residents don't believe they've been communicated with enough. And so I think, I think we've done a good job, a great job with the e-newsletters and those kind of things, but I think communication is so important that we gotta focus on it a little bit more. And all the ideas that Greg mentioned specifically were perfect, great ideas. Second on my list, because I think we, I would like to, another, the second initiative would be to improve kind of our recreational facilities for our youth in the neighborhood. And that's little kids, all the way up to like now my kids are teenagers. And my son the other day was like thinking, oh, I want to go play basketball, I want to do this or that. And I think we have to have more facilities in the city. I know we're a small city, but I think there's ways that we can look to obtain and create those kind of facilities where kids can go and hang out and play and relax in a, you know, in a safe environment and in a fun environment. That's my second initiative. My third initiative would be, and there's tons of initiatives, but, you know, the last one would just be, just work with this, our city and with our DDA to make sure we're bringing good businesses into the city. You know, I love it that we're a walkable city. We see people walking around all the time, and that's great. But I'd love to be able to walk to an ice cream shop somewhere in the neighborhood or a nice little restaurant or cafe. So that's kind of my last initiative, is to work with our existing organizations to bring that about in the city. And I think my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. First, I would want to give control back to residents. The city's organizational chart shows residents at the top, then city's council, and then city staff. That means that the decisions made in the city should be resident-driven, not council-driven. For the past three to four years, that intended model has been flipped upside down by those running the city, putting residents at the bottom. Decisions are being made in a silo. I promise to listen to my neighbors and to put control of our community and their tax dollars back in their hands. Second, live within our means. Our taxes have gone up due to road millage. Water bills have increased by over 22% due to the capital improvement bond. Some residents are being hit with sidewalk replacement costs, and 13 households on Cambridge will be assessed over $8,000 for ditches. This is only the beginning if Mr. Cantor's plans continue. Match our expenditures with our revenue. Next, we need to improve communication responsiveness. According to the Mayor Protem, marijuana was on the agenda of 38 city meetings, but 80 to 90% of the residents that signed the resident-driven marijuana petition knew nothing about it. There is a disconnect. I will insist on hybrid meetings where city council members and staff are accessible to residents. Zoom meetings work for some, but not for all. I will create opportunities to allow for real dialogue. It is extremely frustrating for residents who try to ask questions or voice concerns to be muted, ignored, shamed, slandered, or threatened with lawsuits. I will actively solicit input from all residents by purposely reaching out through various outlets and asking what matters to them. I will hold town halls where city leadership listens rather than talks. I will make sure that phones are answered and calls returned. City hours will reflect the needs of the residents, not city staff. The website will be totally revamped with resident input. Strong communication is critical to a thriving city.
Thank you. To keep things fair, we're gonna start with you again, Karen. Are you ready to jump back into it?
I am ready.
All right, question number two. How would you address the infrastructure issues that the city is facing that might be beyond its own control? For example, recent power outages, flooding, and crucial city services.
Three years ago, an eight-mil, 19-year millage proposal for roads and ditches was defeated by over 60% of Lathrop Village voters. I am proud to say I helped organize the opposition group. However, three of the candidates, Bruce Cantor, Greg Ruvolo, and Saleem Siddiqui, were architects of that failed plan. The millage was too much for too long. The proposal was created without resident input and without looking at our infrastructure system holistically. It also would have unfairly impacted our newer residents. Over 500 residents that recently signed petitions asking for a voice were ignored. Mayor Protem has repeatedly said if they took everything to the residents, they wouldn't get anything done. That is not okay. Lathrop Village residents should be able to decide how their money is spent, and they should be included in discussions to help solve the problems. Our residents have so much to bring to the table. City leadership needs to purposely reach out to residents and to listen. Based on my five years on the Planning Commission, I know that the recommendations for infrastructure and ordinance changes and problem-solving come from the contracted city planners. These city planners have cookie-cutter solutions and products that they sell from city to city, like the bike paths. Go to Ferndale and you will see the same signs and the same paintings on the road. It works in Ferndale, but not in Lathrop Village, just like marijuana dispensaries. Giffords Webster makes a lot of money on their own proposals that lead to projects. Committees formed to address issues should be representative of our diverse community and led by residents, not city council members, like the Infrastructure Committee and the Marijuana Study Group. That is a practice that has been implemented in the last three years, and the process is exclusionary with no checks and balances. City council members lead and advise the committees. City council members develop the proposals. City council members make recommendations to themselves, and then city council members vote to adopt. Many of the city's issues need more than five minds involved in developing solutions. With meaningful resident involvement, I don't think there will be many issues that are beyond our control.
Saleem?
Hi. So, infrastructure issues beyond our control, you know, like, I agree. I think a lot of the issues are under our control. For example, the flooding, city services, those kind of things. The stuff that's out of our control, like power outages and things like that, we should work with DTE. We have contacts there. We should develop those contacts further. We should make sure that we know what they're doing, what technology works, what can be implemented to help us to avoid those kinds of outages in the future, because it's been too often that part of our city has been, you know, without power. So we can continue to work with DTE. But, you know, other than that, I think we should try to control what we can as far as our infrastructure goes. I don't know about you guys, but I want to live in a city that is a positive growth in terms of infrastructure. I want good roads. I want nice yards. I don't want the flooding in the yard. Yeah, I was one of the people that supported that big plan that we had three years ago, and it was voted down, so that's fine. You know, if the people, you know, if our residents don't want it, that's okay with me. I'm not here to push anything. But me personally, and a lot of other people that I know, are in favor of having good services and good roads. And that's why our plan that Bruce's committee put together and I was an advisor on, that's why that passed. So it's not that people don't want, you know, a good place to live. They do. Okay, they didn't want the big, huge enchilada, that's fine. But, you know, I would continue to propose and work on a plan to help this city grow as it needs to and make sure that we have good roads, sewers, water mains, everything that we need. I don't want to live in a city that's falling apart.
So of the three mentioned examples, I feel that only power outages are really out of the city's control. So with that said, we need to build a strong relationship with DTE officials so our voices can be heard. We need a seat at the table with them. I would meet with DTE to discuss a short-term, immediate plan and a long-term solution. The tree trimming program is key to keep our lines clear of falling debris. Also, it comes back to infrastructure of the electrical equipment. Request replacements for what is at end-of-cycle. I would request a review of the entire grid to see what we can, to see what improvements can be made and even potentially burying the lines to avoid it in the future. Regarding the flooding issue, I would, keep going. I would require ditches in all residential areas, including those that have been filled in purposefully or organically, to be reditched so culverts can flow freely. Our current infrastructure project is addressing this topic as we know it and reditching where needed, but only on roads that are being worked on. So personally, my section of Lathrop Boulevard is not slated to be repaired. Therefore, no ditching will be, will take place, which I feel that is needed. I personally spent $11,000 on a new driveway that gets flooded with Lake Lathrop, as I call it, every time a storm comes through, because one side is blocked. There's nowhere for the ditch to, nowhere for the water to flow. So the storm ditch system must flow freely and flawlessly in order for it to work properly. The current investment in our infrastructure is a huge leap forward. As Bruce mentioned, Jeremy Moss's office recently secured some critical state and federal funding to support specifically the infrastructure of a value of $200,000 for the Lathrop Village Storm Ditch System Improvement Project. I'll work with his office to make sure these funds are spent appropriately. Also, I feel another sustainable solution would be to bring back the tree program and possibly the rain garden program so nature can soak up these issues organically. So this ties in with the beautification concept as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. I like that. You know, this is a, this is a great question, and I got it last night. My wife and I were kind of talking about ideas, and I was immediately reminded of the Serenity Prayer. What, you know, give me, God grant me the serenity to accept the things I can't change, but the courage to change the things I can and the wisdom to know the difference. And so, here we are, we're a village, right? And the role of our local government isn't to pick up after ourselves and to be policemen of your yards. You know, we can do that through code enforcement, but you have to trim your trees. You're the homeowner. There's personal responsibility associated with most of these things. You know, the things that are out of our control are limited. You know, most of the things that are affecting us, flooding, power outages, DTE's shown that that's just, for most part, tree lines, you know, trees falling on lines. And so, when you buy a house in Lathrop, you have to take care of it. These are old homes. It's an old community. We have an aging infrastructure. We can only do as much as residents are willing to do for themselves, you know. It requires participation. And I would urge us all to be friendly with one another, participate, help each other out, clear out your ditches, make sure those storm drains are cleaned. Somebody can't trim their trees, help them. Trim the trees. Pick up the sticks. You know, that goes a long way, and then we'd have less to worry about, you know. We'd have less that was out of our control. And the things that are out of our control, we can have nice partnerships with the people that actually do control those by being engaged and creating open dialogue. So, thanks. I appreciate your time.
All right, well, thank you. I will unpack all of Ms. Miller's comments a little bit later, but I'll focus on the question for right now. First, let's talk about the recent power outages. We had a similar issue with frequent power outages about two years ago. And at that time, we engaged DTE to have an open house where they provided both information and listened to the residents. And as a result of that meeting, or that town hall, they replaced about 10 transformers in the city and stepped up their tree trimming program. And I know that personally, because we lost 11 trees because of that program. But it did help get reliable power. Based on the experience this year, we need to urge them to do another open house and listen to our residents and take action. If they don't make any commitments for improvement, then the city should organize a campaign for residents to contact the Michigan Public Service Commission, who holds the stick over DTE. As far as flooding goes, we do have a lot of control over that, and here's what we can do. First, with respect to basement flooding, the city has a 60-million-gallon underground holding tank that stores sewage, so it doesn't back up into basements during extreme weather events. The infrastructure bond that I orchestrated includes funds to make significant repairs and improvements to increase the functionality of the storage tank and the sewer system in general. In addition, council just signed an agreement with the Evergreen Farmington Sewer Disposal System that will allow us to dump waste significantly faster, which lessens the chances of basement backups. Second, regarding our citywide ditch flooding program, we passed a proposal in 2020 that provides for the reconditioning of seven miles of ditches, but that still leaves 19 miles unaddressed. For these remaining ditches, last week, I arranged for code enforcement to begin addressing some of the basic problems like Mark was talking about that cause ditch flooding. Things like blocked culverts, tree roots in the ditches, heaved culverts, and so forth. This should all help to improve the overall system functionality. We're also in the process of creating a video to teach residents how to maintain their ditches to increase drainage and reduce flooding. And then we'll also continue to pursue sewer grants, or all grants in general, like the $200,000 grant we got from the state of Michigan for making, to help make a structural improvements to the ditch system.
Awesome. Thank you. And Jalen, you're up.
Thank you so much. So I think everyone had great ideas, so we definitely could put those all together and make for a better city. So one thing that I would like to address is basically our infrastructure and our, and our, and our, our power outages. So, I would like to look into investing into solar power energy. I think that's one way we could combat climate change, as well as helping our residents save a little bit of money, or maybe we can invest in a different service or a new service. So, first, we would, the first initiative would be to actually place the solar power panels on municipal-owned property, and that would basically help the city be able to run during power, power outages. That would help you all be able to call and let you, let everyone know that the power has gone out. And I think eventually, we could look into actually a solar farm where we partner possibly with Southfield to develop a solar, solar farm. That way, you would be, we will all be able to rent solar power energy from the solar developer. That would combat a little bit of the power outages. I'm not sure if it would combat everyone's power outages, but I think it's a step in the right direction. I've also looked at some of the examples of solar power programs, and it's been recorded and documented that it has saved cities or schools about 25% from their power bills. So, I think that would be something that would be creative and a good way to save us all money and to also just collectively have great ideas for the city of Lathor Village.
Thank you, Jalen. Now, we're going to do something a little unorthodox. We're going to start from the center and go out to give you guys a little bit more flexibility in your answers, so you don't have to go right again, Jalen. So, first, we're going to have Mark. Are you comfortable going first?
Sure.
Great. It wasn't an option. The third question that we have here today that all the candidates will be answering is, the city is very diverse. How do you plan to build accessibility into your agenda on council to meet the, meet the needs of these residents?
Thanks for the question. I think it's a really good one. And as I talked about before, the charm of Lathrop lies in its diversity and the diverse nature of the opinions of the residents. And communication, effective communication, will address most of that as, equity is about access. And communication provides access. This would start at City Hall, you know? If we found a temporary, short-term solution to just answering the phone when residents call, we would feel like we're much more a part of the decision-making process. Let's chart those calls. Let's talk about what people are talking about. Create a flowchart so that we can start getting back to people about what their concerns are. You know, meet people where they're at. Inclusion is about bringing everybody to the table, all right? And when people feel like they don't have a voice, they can't come to the table. So, we need to be able to meet people where they're at and get them to where we are, right? So, as a city, that's how we ensure that the diverse ideas and diverse population are all represented and have equal access, you know? Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mark. Bruce, you ready?
Okay, so, I, I see this as a question of communication and engagement. So, no matter how good an organization communicates, there's always room for improvement. So, for example, we're currently looking into adding text message blasts to our multifaceted communication strategy. This would be in addition to all the other forms of communication that we use, like the city website, Facebook, Zoom, e-newsletters, public access TV, town halls, the Our Town magazine, See Click Fix, and so on. The administration has done a great job at making information easily available to residents. But the real problem that the city has is one of resident engagement. So, with the busy lives of our residents, how do we get residents to engage and stay engaged during the process and not just at the very end? So, one potential solution we're considering is to assign block captains, who would have the pulse on their specific neighborhood and can create neighborly events where council members and staff can participate and listen and provide updates. Another is to do more neighborhood-driven town halls, like I did during the years of the Road Proposal. At that time, I did 15 in-home town halls where we discussed roads, but also discussed the other issues on residents' minds. Unfortunately, we had to stop that because of COVID, but hopefully, we'll be able to start that up again. These are just a couple of ideas that we're currently exploring to improve engagements with our residents, but I'm hoping to trying others. So, that's my answer to that. But since I have 45 seconds left, I'm going to start unpacking what was said over there a minute ago. First of all, one of the things Ms. Miller said is that we have to match our expenses to revenue. We've done that for four years, the four years that I've been on council. Until COVID, we were one of the few cities in the state that added to the general fund every year. That's how good we managed our expenses. She wants to match our expenses to revenue? Well, when we did that, we were, we had enough money with state funding to do .3 miles of roadway a year. That means to get every road in the city 63 years before the roads will be done. So, if we're going to match expenses to revenue, we're not going to get anything done. We had to find other sources of revenue through villages and subsidies and so forth. Otherwise, we'll do nothing in the city.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay. So, I believe communication clearly is a problem in this city. So, one thing I have looked into is already, I've already started the process, but making sure that residents are engaged through text messaging and things of that nature. I've already pressed go on that. So, that's one thing we need to look into, as well as, since the city is diverse, we need to look into see if there are any language barriers that we could combat, and we could figure out how to translate and things of that nature. I think that's one thing we also could work on. And, lastly, I just don't, I, the diverse part, I felt was pretty broad, but when, if we all come together, maybe we have a representative from each group that is considered diverse and develop a task force. I think we could understand what everyone is dealing with in the city, and we could possibly combat that. And so, that could be in the form of town halls or coffee hours. I actually hosted a coffee hour this morning. I sent out mailers. So, I've taken initiatives to actually use my own, own hard-earned money to reach out to the residents of the city of Lathor Village. And I think we all could start doing that to not always depend on the city to reach out to each other. We could use our own resources as well. Thank you.
Greg, do you want to start us off?
Sure.
So, this is a question of inclusivity. Like, how do we bring our various pockets of our city together, right? How do I make myself available to all residents? This topic dovetails nicely with my communication strategy, because again, I feel communications is key when it comes to building and maintaining an engaged community. Along with the details that I outlined earlier, I see community engagement as a vehicle of being inclusive, recognizing that residents have different needs of how they want to be included. Offering various channels would be most effective, most of, I described earlier. Recognizing, for example, getting out into the community is another one, for face-to-face time with residents, walking the neighborhoods for spontaneous feedback. Now, I'm not saying it's going to be 10 degrees out, because I'm not doing that. I don't think any of us are going to be walking in February up and down the streets, but making our, making cell phone numbers available, making email addresses available, making our information available. I support the concept of having neighborhood captains, so residents can feel more comfortable with approaching someone in their immediate area and relaying that message to council. I have an open-door policy. Of course, I'd be welcome, I would welcome anyone to visit my home for discussions, but I don't want to sit back and wait for residents to come to my front door. I want to go to your front door. I want to engage. I want, I will be happy to visit any resident's house upon request or meet in a public location to talk about concerning topics. Again, going back to my college days, I found out, I found that when I would go to see a professor during their office hours, I know that they're there. I know they're expecting somebody to show up. I would hold office hours Monday through, Monday and Wednesday for a block of two hours, you know, in the afternoon, possibly in the evening, on the weekends. Something that is a scheduled time where you know that I'm available. In this new post-COVID era, we've quickly had to pivot and figure out how to live differently. Over the past 18 months, I've created two communities to promote inclusivity and bring residents together. This past March, I co-founded and launched the Lathrop Village LGBTQ+ Social Group, which is a social networking group. Am I up? Okay. To bring residents of that community together. Also, in May of 2020, I created and launched, and currently maintain, the online Facebook community called Lathor Villagers Marketplace, active with members of 324 as of today. The purpose of this group was to buy and sell household goods and bring residents together.
Thank you for that.
I'm a communicator. I got to talk.
We're going to have it, so far, you've all been very thorough. So, we're going to have plenty of opportunities for you to plug that in. Salim?
Hello, everyone. Yeah, so, yeah, our community is very diverse, and that's, you know, that's a main reason, or one of the main reasons we all live here, and we love that. So, it's all about, I think what Greg said, bringing people together. I think communication is a key, and, and the items that have been described, improved communication will allow people to become aware of and know when all of our, all of our meetings are taking place in terms of our city council meetings, our study groups, study sessions. We'd like people to attend those more, so we'll communicate better so that people know when they are and they can attend. But I'd also like to hold like a quarterly community gathering, like somewhere like here, outside or inside in the, in the community building when things are, when we can do that. Maybe we can do that now, but, you know, something like that quarterly, where it's not a city council meeting necessarily, but, you know, our city council people should be there. Our staff might be there. You know, we can think about how to do that and just bring the community together where we can listen to people and see what's on everyone's minds. I think that would help. And then, lastly, I think, you know, Jalen's idea of having coffee hours or copy talk is a great idea, and, you know, I would commit to doing that monthly, just to meet with people and listen to them and hear what they have to say. Those are my kind of thoughts on that. Thanks.
City Hall used to be a warm, welcoming place. People knew each other. There was a connection. Community organizations were valued. Now, there are plexiglass panels and metal rolled-down doors. Hours are based on the needs of staff, not on our residents. Restrooms aren't accessible. Phones aren't answered. Phone calls aren't returned. Even though the administration budget has increased over the last four years by 71%, service to residents has steadily declined. Our recreation budget has been cut 25%, and there is talk of further cuts in a community that thrives on community events and connection. That needs to change. In 2018, a group of residents and I resurrected the Lathor Village Supper Club, a group created in 1945 to foster community fellowship at the end of World War II. By the time the pandemic hit, we had 100 taxpaying resident members, and everyone appreciated the opportunity to connect as a community. Our membership was reflective of the many layers of diversity in our community. That is the kind of thing that makes a community attractive. The $1,200 total discount we asked for would have paid dividends over and over. City leadership had always been supportive of Supper Club. However, this city council and administrators seemed to be very short-sighted and viewed Supper Club as a private club that isn't worthy of a discount. We had no more value to them than a non-resident renting the community room for a shower. Just like the marijuana petitions, the city council and city, city leadership gave no more weight to the signatures of 440 taxpayer residents than they gave to 400-plus forged signatures collected by paid circulators. Accessibility occurs when residents are listened to and respected. The Lathor Village many of us know and love is welcoming to everyone. We are united by our commonalities rather than divided by our differences. We make connections with each other. We celebrate together. We grieve together. Our diversity is one of the reasons I have chosen to live in Lathor Village rather than a more homogeneous community. Current leadership is cliquish and divisive. If you don't agree with them, you are the enemy. Diversity of thought is not welcome. Questions lead to name-calling and exclusion and threaten lawsuits. There have been questionable spending of taxpayer dollars, and Michigan election laws have been violated. I tend to?
Yep. Thank you. So, that was the beginning of our standard questions. So, yeah, let's give more applause. So, now, we're going to start with public comment. We received a lot of public comment. I mean, a lot of public comment. And so, I'm really excited to get to these questions, because these are the questions that are definitely most relevant to you, because you're the ones bringing them to the table. Now, the rules are the same. It's going to be two minutes to answer each of these questions. Not every candidate has to respond. There's going to be a lot of topics that have already been covered. So, if you don't feel like you need to add additional comments, you don't need to. Just keep it civil to the two-minute mark, and we'll hopefully have a good time. So, the first question that I'm going to raise to the top, because it seems to be a topic a lot of these candidates want to discuss, is communication. So, if there are any additional plans that you have to improve transparency and communication within the city, we'd love to hear them. Now, with this, raise your hand. We're going to have a speaking list ready to go, so raise your hand if you'd like to answer, and we'll go from there. Right ahead.
All right. So, you know, everybody's talking about communication. It's what I think everyone acknowledges is an issue, especially after we've come off a crazy year of COVID, and everybody locked in their homes, and not knowing how to reach out or do what, and becoming unfamiliar with new platforms of Zoom and Face, you know, whatever. All these meetings that we're having in our own homes where we're isolated. I would propose a couple simple things that could get everybody on the same page. First, residents taking responsibility for this and starting a communication committee, right? So, if we have a communication committee, we can say, what are the barriers that we have to effectively getting out the message of the city and the city council? And what's creating this feeling among residents that they're not being heard, right? Then, we can have, perhaps, in City Hall, if it, Cheryl sees it necessary, we could have a communication point person in City Hall that's responsible for coordinating all the feedback that the citizens put forward. And I'm being given the finger, so I'll, I'll pass it along now. But, you know, I, I think that this is definitely not something that's outside of our control. And working together, we can address this communication problem effectively.
Appreciate that, Mark.
I just want to add to what Mark said. I, the thing I like about that idea is that if we do get a communication committee, then that committee could, could help the city try to figure out what are some of these stumbling blocks between the communication that we offer and the engagement with the residents? So, as I mentioned earlier, it's incredibly frustrating for us as council to have that lack of engagement. You know, we, we sit in our council meetings before COVID, and there's two or three people in the audience. And, you know, the way to get good solutions is to have good participation. So, for example, in the first road village that failed, the great thing about that was it, it put a lot of focus on the roads. And so, people got engaged. They started coming to our meetings. And through those people coming to our meetings, we came up with some great ideas. And a lot of those ideas made it into the final proposal that was, that was voted on by, successfully by the residents. So, again, you know, I mentioned it earlier. I think engagement is key. And anything like a committee like that, that can increase engagement, is going to end up helping us create better solutions that meet everybody's needs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Go right ahead.
I just want to say, I don't, we're a small community. We're a connected community. I don't know that we need an elaborate communication plan with block captains and all of these other things. People just need to listen. The city leadership needs to listen to residents to give us an opportunity to have a real dialogue with them, to bring our ideas, to be a part of solving the solutions. As I said earlier, it takes more than five minds to solve our problems and to celebrate our community.
Thank you, Greg. Yeah, go ahead, Salim.
Hi. So, my thought on that is, yeah, transparency is very important. I feel like, you know, since I've been on the council for three years, I feel like we're very transparent. I feel like we've advertised and posted and made people aware as much as possible. But obviously, there's a perception among some people that, hey, there's not enough, they don't know about it. So, they, there's a perception that maybe there's not enough transparency. So, in order to improve that, I think communication, communication is key. Make sure people know when the meetings are. Make sure people know when this, you know, when we're having full meetings, some study, study session meetings, committee meetings. Accusations have been made that, you know, people don't know about this meeting or that meeting. Well, I, every meeting was published. People were made aware of it, but obviously, some people did not get that, did not connect with it. So, maybe I would implement everything that Greg mentioned before. He's got a great list of communication tools, which are perfect. The emails, the texting, all those items are what we need to do. And when we do that, people will know. People will know what's going on. People will be engaged, and, you know, there won't be that negative attitude out there that, hey, you know, we don't know what's going on. The city council is not transparent. I mean, I'm telling you, that's not the case at all. But I understand the perception if people don't check out the website or don't check out Facebook, and they don't get an email or something, they're, they're going to possibly feel that way. But I think improved communication will help that.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, as a communications professional, this is a common problem. It's So, as a communications professional, this is a common problem. It's not just within our city, it happens, I'm sure you may know this in your day job. It happens in organizations and in businesses, of course. So, we had the same issue in my day job, and we, we formed a communications committee, which was a fantastic first step. But we quickly found out that that was not working. So, what we did is we transformed that into an engagement committee. Two-way street, not only pushing information, as I mentioned earlier, but getting information from, from employees. And that seemed to work, and still does, work a lot better. So engagement committee, I think, is the key. Could be called a communications committee, same interchangeable term. But, but I, I do think that's a, a great concept and great idea.
Yeah, you still had about a minute left, Karen, you're welcome to finish that out if you'd like.
Yeah, I just wanna say, the meetings are advertised, and there's Zoom links put out, and the dates are put out there, but you don't have access to the agendas until probably 48 hours before the meeting. It's, it's not enough time for someone who is interested in a topic to even, you know, know what's happening. And, and the website, you really have to search, I mean, I've spent hours and hours trying to find things that are going on. So it may be out there, but it's not necessarily accessible or easily accessible. So I think there needs to be a better job of letting the residents know what topics you're going to be talking about, so that if it's something that they're interested in, something that's gonna impact them, they will take the time to come to a meeting, or, or tune into a Zoom meeting, and listen to what you have to say, and then present what they wanna say.
So, thank you for the response. I'm gonna escalate another question up, that I think's appropriate for the current dialogue we have here to, at this point. How do you plan to work with council members and residents you may disagree with? Open that up to the floor.
Yeah, same way I always do, listen. You know, we, people can come to council, I get phone calls regularly. You know, I, with the marijuana debate, I think he's here today, one, one resident and I, we had, I think, an hour-long conversation, and a half an hour-long conversation on separate, at separate times. He vehemently disagreed with my position, I vehemently disagreed with his position, but we listened to each other, we talked. He changed my mind on a few things, made me, you know, reassess some of the things that I had thought, and, and go back and rethink them a little bit. We still didn't end up agreeing, but, you know, listening, I mean, the, I mean, this is, not to grandstand, but this is the problem in Washington. Nobody listens to each other. And that's the great thing about local politics, is that you have access to your, to your city council, and you can talk to them, you can, I've been to almost everybody's home so far in the last two weeks. You all have my phone number, you all have my email address, because it's on my flyer. I've already started getting, getting calls. So it's, it, talking, listening, you know, that's, that's how you communicate, and that's how you exchange ideas. And again, that's how you work towards good solutions.
We have Karen, and then you're up next.
I'm sorry, did you say me?
Yep, you're up.
Okay, thanks. As an elected official, I do have a lot of experience, 14 years over a 17-year period. You can't take things personally. You have to listen to what other people have to say. You have to take the information from a variety of resources, listen, and then come up with what you believe as a group is best for your community. Not for personal, you know, your own personal things, or friends' things, or whatever. You have to be open to all of the residents. I have years of, of experience building community, and working with individuals of all ages, from diverse cultural, ethnic, socioeconomic, political, religious, and educational backgrounds. And we, over the years, have created programs and processes for the greater good. And so that, you know, I think is, is important as an elected official. Like I said, you cannot take things personal, you have to be about the community.
Thank you, Karen. Jalen, you're up, and then Greg.
Sure, thank you. So I believe, first, listening is, is a key task. Also, agreeing to disagree would be one thing that I think everyone should know how to do when you're on council. I have worked for Detroit City Council for the past two and a half years, so I've experienced learning how to negotiate across the aisle. So I think if we all can figure out some kind of compromise, that, that seems to be the best way to get things done. If everyone can get something out of it, and, and it's for the good of Lathar Village, I believe that's the way to go. And that's how you work with others, and always just be kind to each other.
So I anticipated this question, and it would come up. So as I mentioned earlier, a good leader is a good listener, right? So we need to find a common ground, we need to find a balance. I think all city council members need to be moderates to successfully move our city forward. Now, I'm not a politician, I'm an everyday resident that's looking to take an active role in representing the residents of Lathar Village with my own voice and my own thoughts. I'd keep partisan politics out of our local government by focusing on the big picture, by simplifying the conversation, not confusing it with erroneous statements, also by getting back to basics, working as a team to accomplish common community goals. A city is like a business, it's like any other business. If we cannot find a common ground, that business will fail. I don't want our city to fail. I'm running for city council, so we will succeed.
Yeah, Salim, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanna comment, that I think people need to come into this city council with the right attitude. I mean, hey, we're a small community, we're all neighbors, really, so treat each other like a neighbor. Treat each other fairly, with kindness, like Jalen said. If, if we do that, then, you know, even if we don't agree on things, we'll be civil, we'll get through things, we'll come to a consensus at some point. You know, that's, that's what I would recommend.
Thank you, Salim. So the next question we have, and this is kind of a culmination of a few questions we got, all centered around, what are your economic priorities?
I guess I'll go. So, I think everyone's priority is Southfield Road. That's one thing we all would like to see develop and enhance. So I really would like to work with everyone who is so fortunate to be on council, and see where we can go with Southfield Road. Also, just leveraging different relationships that I've built, working for the city of Detroit with different contractors, developers, and things of that nature, different resources, I would like to see Southfield Road grow. Also, I just would like to see us develop some ways to save money, save our taxpayer dollars, and also just look into creative things to do, such as like broadband, and I've already touched on solar power. I believe if we look into broadband, even though I think majority of the residents of Lathar Village have Wi-Fi, it will allow you to have different resources and, for, for your internet services. And it will allow you to save money, and it will be a great thing for the city of, uh, city of Lathar Village. And so, just different ways to save us money, and also put us into the future, as well as clean energy. So those are some things I am looking into.
Thank you. Salim, we have you next, and then...
Yeah, so my economic priorities, I think we'd continue to make sure we have a balanced budget, like we've had over the last few years. Go after grants as much as possible, bring in as much revenue as possible that way, make sure we're spending our money wisely. We continue to assess the contracts we have. This past year, we looked at our auditing contract. We took, you know, proposals from like eight to 10 accounting firms, and ultimately settled back on our current firm, but we all felt good about it, because we, we did that research and came out of it, you know, getting the best deal and services that we could. So continue to look at all of our contracts, make sure we're spending our money appropriately. There's one big item that's out there, we have this outstanding retiree pension, or retiree benefit obligation that's out there, that's in the millions of dollars, and we gotta get a handle on how to handle that as a city. A lot of cities have the same issue, but we need to plan for it and figure out how to deal with it. And it's all about, all the economic stuff, it's all about planning, being aware of what's out there, and, and coming up with a plan to deal with these things. So that's what I would do.
Thank you, Salim. Bruce?
Yeah, so I'll echo, I'll echo what, what Salim said, and I talked in some of my earlier comments about, about obtaining grants. But then also, you know, being a, a budget hawk as I am, driving Cheryl and the staff crazy every budget season, going through it line by line, and finding, finding ways to save money. A great example of that was when I first got on council, I pulled some of the contracts, and looked at some of the budgets, and we were paying, and I hope everybody is sitting down, we were paying $40,000 a year for 10 hours of code enforcement. Let that sink in for a second. So, long story short, it took a little bit, but we, we actually brought it in-house, and through negotiating with the DDA, you know, we're actually paying now $20,000 a year of taxpayer money for code enforcement, and we're getting 40 hours full-time. So four times the, four times the code enforcement for, for, you know, half the amount of money that we were paying. The other thing, in terms of economics, we've got to do something about the school there. You know, we had a, a project come to us, a $17 million project, wanted to redevelop this historic school in a modernization way, in a modern way, you know, with about two, I think it was 200 townhomes, with shops and restaurants on the ground floor. The building owner wouldn't, all they needed, they were ready to go with the planning commission, all they needed was the building. The current building owner wouldn't even talk to them to even entertain a price for the building. So we're, we're getting choked by that, by that facility. We need tax revenue. We can't keep going to the, to the taxpayers for, for more money, and a $17 million project would be a big boom to the city. So, continue to work on that.
Does anybody ever answer that question by saying, "We need more taxes," right? You know, what, what's your economic priorities? Well, I'd like to tax my neighbors more. No. You know, it's just by, it's by project management, making sure that we have our ducks in a row, and we're not doing the same thing twice, like replacing sidewalks, and then doing the roads, and then having to replace the sidewalks again. Evaluating our logistics, and being good stewards with that money that we already have, and then looking for new sources of revenue. Whether it be grant writing, I think having a permanent grant writer who's really skilled at that would pay dividends, including their own salary. And then learning how to, or identifying ways to incentivize our local business owners and property owners to be participants in our community.
Thank you. Karen?
When I said we need to live within our means, I didn't mean we don't raise taxes, we don't bring any other revenue. I meant we need to take a holistic view of what our community needs are, we bring our residents together, and together we determine what our priorities are, and then we can determine what we can afford. It just needs to be done, you know, together. The large Road Village, that was the first time in my life I ever voted no on a tax increase or a millage. And I was one of the ones leading the charge against it, because I didn't believe the residents were involved. And so anything in our community, we need to have resident input, real, meaningful resident input, to determine how your tax dollars are going to be spent.
Anybody else?
Agreed, no. So, my economic priorities, you know, obviously, Southfield Road is, it's a means of transportation right now. So my vision is to turn it into a destination, right? So we need to bring new businesses down there, offer them incentives to move into Lathar Village, whether it's from the outskirts of, within the city, onto, let's say, Main Street on Southfield Road, offer them incentives to move there. Also, looking into all, we've talked about the grants program, you know, so Michigan Economic Development Corporation, they have grant programs. I run a privately funded grant program through my day job. There's our, there are many more grant programs out there. We just need to know where to look, where to find them, and how to apply for them. And it all, I think it comes down to an awareness campaign for small business owners. You know, if they need, if they know where to look for something, if they know how to apply for something, the more power to them. Engagement committee, right. Subcommittee.
I appreciate all your responses. You have all been very thorough thus far. Shifting gears just a little bit, how would you plan to attract and retain talent within the city and its staff?
So I guess it's a little quiet, so... So, one of the things I would like to do is, what I've learned, working for city government, is just networking. Big thing in city government is just going to different functions and different programs. So that is one thing I would like to do, is just go to different, like, developer events and things of that nature, and actually let them know that Lathar Village exists. I think one of the issues may be that many people don't know that Lathar Village actually exists, because you drive through it so quickly. So, just letting people know that Lathar Village actually exists, and letting them know about the, the tax base and the, the diverse community that lives here. I have had experience with going to these different conferences, and, conferences, and things of that nature. So, that, that is one thing I would like to do, and that's, that's a way I think we could really bring some attraction to the city of Lathar Village.
I guess in answering that question, one of the things I would say is, we've already attracted some amazing talent. We have an amazing city administrator sitting right here. You know, she's, she's done an amazing, amazing job of bringing in talent, and using that talent to, to the maximum capability with a, with a limited budget. And the other, the other thing that was also very impressive was, in, in terms of retaining people, you know, we have, we, we lose a lot of people in some of our jobs, because they come in here, they get good experience, they get bored with their job, because there isn't a lot more for them to do, and so they leave and they go on. So what she's done is she's split up, and so we had an opening for a position, but rather than hire a 50 or $60,000 employee, she split up those responsibilities among existing staff to give them more opportunity, more of a challenge, so that they would stay longer, we would increase retention, and along with that, we gave them salary increases. And we heard a lot from, you know, from Ms. Miller, for example, about how we were being fiscally irresponsible, and how we're, you know, increasing the salaries. But first off, in that particular instance, it was a dramatic decrease, because the salary increases came nowhere near what we would have paid for, for a new employee. Plus, we retain those employees, and when you retain them, you don't spend money recruiting, and, and all the money that's associated with that, which can be, I mean, I know in the private world, they talk about it takes 75 to $100,000 to find a new employee. So you don't spend that money, because we're retaining them. So I think she's done an amazing job of, of attracting talent and, and, and keeping them, so.
Anybody else? Yep, go ahead.
Just, you mentioned a limited budget. I'm not sure how the 71% increase in the administrative costs over four years is within a limited budget. I haven't seen...
Just a reminder, keep this to the points that you have in the values, have, not in a debate fashion.
Okay, okay, sorry. Okay, my question is then, 71% increase, I don't see where the cost savings was.
Any other comments on the, this question, with the talent?
Yeah, I think the way we, you know, like Bruce said, we give people opportunities, and Cheryl's done a great job of giving people opportunities, and you pay them fairly. I mean, I've been in, working in management roles for like a long time, and bottom line, you gotta pay people fairly, and, and that keeps them, that attracts good people, and I think that's what we do.
Thank you, Salim.
Thanks for being here, Cheryl, appreciate it. One of the small and meaningful things that we could do, and I don't know if this exists right now, because I'm not extremely familiar with the inner workings of the entire staff, but a residential recognition program. If you have a good experience with somebody at City Hall, the residents would be able to recognize them. Let's say it's a point system, you know, you, Cheryl earns 100 points, because somebody, 10 people gave her 10 points, then that equals something. An incentive, a bonus, a small bonus, you know, considering the budget, but, but it's, people like to be recognized, right? And our city staff deserves to be recognized. So that, that's just another incentive that we could put in place, based on employee retention, making people feel good, and moving forward.
Just so I have something to say about this, I like Jalen's idea, you know, of having an internship program in our city offices. The more you think about it, if we had high schoolers and college students, and they, and they had an opportunity to, to get their feet wet, working in city government as part of a project for their degrees, or what have you, we would have a pipeline and a database of people that have worked here, that we could go to, offer their first jobs to. When we needed to replace people, we could save money on recruitment in that way. And so I thought that that was very forward-thinking, Jalen, thank you.
Can I add one thing, real quick?
Sure.
Sorry, that is a great idea, and I do wanna point out that I think Cheryl had implemented that idea already, which, which was great. And I think we should just keep it, continue it, and keep it, move it forward.
Way to go, Cheryl.
So, we're reaching the end of our form time, so I'm gonna ask two more questions and then we're gonna go into closing remarks. So, what is the largest challenge the city has going forward?
The largest challenge we have going forward, I think, is our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is old. Our water system was put in in 1920, has a 50-year life on it. So, we're, what year is it, 20, when you're a retiree, you forget these things. But yeah, so 50 years, 50 years over its expected life. That's why we have 30 to 40 water main breaks a year. Water main breaks are expensive, they eat our budget. You know, our sewer system, you know, needs some replacing. Our roads, you know, we still have, you know, it was great that we passed that road proposal. You know, we, on that road proposal, we targeted, we're gonna repave seven miles of our 11 worst roads in the city, but there's still other roads that need to be paved. You know, we haven't been able to maintain things the way we should. Our sewage storage tank, then, I don't know if a lot of you know, but on 11 Mile and Evergreen behind Michigan First, that's where that 60 million gallon tank is. It's been operating at about 70% efficiency because we haven't been able to afford to, you know, maintain it. And what that means is, as we don't maintain it, people's basements start backing up. We're replacing our fire hydrants. You know, our fire hydrants were inefficient and some of them didn't even work. So, you know, if somebody's house burns down or is on fire, we need to be able to put it out. These are all infrastructure things and I can, everybody knows when I start talking about infrastructure, I can go on for a long time. But that's our biggest problem. And we can't, you know, I agree with, I think, everybody on the panel here, we can't keep coming to residents to fix the infrastructure. So, we've gotta find grants, we gotta keep our fingers crossed at this $1 trillion infrastructure proposal in Congress goes through and that we can get some of that money. We have to keep aggressively looking for outside sources of money because we have to fix our infrastructure. Because when you turn your faucet on, you want water and that's not always gonna be the case if we don't do something about it.
I think Bruce is on to it right away. And so, the largest challenge we face is just our small size. You know, we can't build anymore, we can't go out, so we have to look within. So, we have to run lean and we have to identify those sources of revenue that we can generate and compel and bring to the table so that we can fix the largest problems like, you know, our crumbling roads, our water issues and what have you. So, I think they're birds of a feather.
All right.
Can I comment?
Yeah, so I agree 100% with those, both of those comments. I mean, our biggest challenge is maintaining and developing and improving our infrastructure without getting killed financially. I mean, that's the bottom line. And yeah, nobody wants to raise taxes, you know, nobody wants to borrow tons of money, but we want a good, a nice place to live, right? So, I think our community is awesome, I think it's diverse, I think the people are great. All that is a positive for us, we have that going for us. We just need to keep it nice and keep it beautiful and keep it functional and that's the key.
Along the same lines, obviously the infrastructure is important, right? We are landlocked, our city is landlocked, right? So, we can't expand. You hit the nail on the head, Mark, we can't expand. We can go up, which would mean leveling something and redeveloping and rebuilding, right? So, it's all about, but in order to do that, the foundation needs to be there. And I think that's what's important right now and that's what's being addressed over the next couple of years. Laying that foundation, laying that infrastructure so it's secure for the future.
So, oh, can I just say something really quickly? So, as Bruce said, infrastructure is a big deal. So, one of the things that I have, I think grants are one of our, the things that we can truly leverage. And so, I have been doing research and Governor Whitmer, she has a grant program for cities under 10,000 to help with road repair. So, I have reached out to her office, I've taken the liberty of reaching out to her office and figuring out like how can we stay in contact with her office when the next set of grants are due to roll out and how we can be a part of that grant program. So, I just wanted to touch on that, thank you.
I just wanted to agree, say that I agree with the infrastructure being our highest priority. I always believed that, I was not against the infrastructure program. I just thought at the time, again, we needed to look at everything holistically, set our priorities and then match our revenue at that point and raise taxes. I just felt the first road millage was at almost nine mills for 19 years, was putting all of our eggs in one basket. And there were so many other things at that point that we knew about. We knew about lead pipes, we knew about the sewer issues, we knew about all of those things. So, you know, I would have liked the community to participate and look at everything together and then determine what our priorities were.
So, seeing no additional comment, I'm gonna move on to the next question. I'll shift gears a little. This question asks, "A community is only as strong as our public schools. What would you do to strengthen the relationship between Lathrop Village and Southfield Public Schools?"
So, I can speak to that. So, actually during my candidacy, I have developed great relationships with Southfield Public School Board members. So, some of them have supported me, actually one of the school board members is actually my campaign manager. So, we have collectively been working on ways to bring Southfield and Lathrop Village together. And so, a lot of the things that I would like to do, Southfield School Board would actually like to do as well. So, we're looking to actually partner to not make the burden so heavy on Lathrop as well as not make the burden so heavy on Southfield. So, I just wanted to touch on that, thank you.
Go ahead Karen, and then maybe you.
This is my thing. Spending 14 years on the school board, it was all ways of struggle trying to prove the value and quality of our school district in relationship to the high taxes that we paid. When I was on the school board, Proposal A was passed and Southfield was one of three school districts in the entire state that was really negatively impacted. It took the burden of taxing and of supporting the schools off the backs of businesses and put it on the backs of our residents. And that has been a real issue. And when I was on the school board, I tried to work with our local representatives, our state representatives to see what we could do about rolling that back or having it reexamined. I still think that we need to do that. You know, it's always blaming the schools, take so much of our money, but it was an unfair way that we were taxed and we had no say in it and no choice. And we've just had to, the school district has just had to live with it. And as far as the quality of the schools, I know a lot of people in Lathrop Village do not send their children to Southfield Public Schools. You have every right to send your child wherever you go, but to bash the school district that you are paying taxes to, that is part of your community, it's really counterproductive. And I used to believe that when I was on the school board, when we would have staff bashing the schools. You know, it's here, it's our school district, the children that are in that school district deserve to have a quality education. They deserve to have opportunities available to them like any other community. And so, you know, I think it's critical that city leadership works with the school district. And that's been on and off over the last, you know, 35 years, at least that I know of.
Thank you Karen.
So, a couple of things there. First of all, I think one of the things that the Southfield, Southfield Public School System doesn't do well is market itself. We had them presenting to us and their results are actually surprising, from what I had heard from residents, it's surprisingly better than what the residents think it is. They actually have some really good results and some outstanding results over at the academy there. But, that said, I think we're an afterthought to the Southfield School Board. We've tried to meet with them on multiple occasions, we've had them in, we kind of aired a lot of our grievances. How long ago was this, do you remember? Two, a year, a little over a year ago? We kind of gave them a list of things that we wanted to hear about and hear back from, we haven't heard a thing since. So, I think we need to work on our relationship with them. You know, I think they know that, you know, they can, they can kind of do what they want. If they had a, if they had a millage for Southfield Public Schools and every single person in Lathrop voted no, it would still pass overwhelmingly because we're just a small part of the overall district. But, you know, we need to be heard and we need them to consider us and to, you know, have them think of us as a valued part of the school system. And I just don't necessarily feel that that's the way it is right now. And so, we need to work on our relationship with them, we need to try to meet with them more often and even just to have them just do a dog and pony show every quarter so that we know what's going on and we can address any concerns that we have.
Go ahead Mark.
You know, I was asked, I asked a friend this when they moved to Ferndale about 10 years ago and I said, "What are you gonna do about the schools, you know, when you have your children there?" And he gave me a great poignant answer and it was, "Well, I'm going to be the schools." You know, and as our town, you know, Lathrop's evolving, you know, we're attracting younger families. We're attracting families that have more than one child. I have my little son back there. You know, and as we bring these families into our town and we attract young families, we will become the schools. The schools are only as good as the parents that are involved in them. And the more parents that are involved in them and the better Lathrop is represented on school committees and PTA and in classrooms, the more effective and louder our voice will be. So, it's, you know, you have to meet the experience at your level of participation.
So, I don't have children, yet I pay taxes for Southfield Public Schools. I will never benefit from that, my family will never benefit from that. But I think looking at it the other way is, we should have a Lathrop Village resident on Southfield Public School Board. To be a voice. Do we have, I don't, I don't know too much about it.
Believe we do and we usually have.
Okay, well then, good. We should continue to have that person there.
Any other comments on this question? Or seeing none? It seems like we have a little bit more time here, so we're gonna do one last question and then go into closing remarks. So, what have you done to reach across the aisle and bring the city together? What have you done to reach across the aisle and bring the city together?
I guess, could you be a little bit more specific?
Yeah, across what aisle?
The.
With residents or with council members?
Can I just comment?
Well, I think.
That was a question, right?
I think it was a question on the divide between the city. I think it was a resident-centered question.
I mean, to me, there's no aisle to reach across. I mean, we're all Lathrop Village residents, we're all neighbors, we should all be, you know, civil and kind and caring with each other. And, you know, I think we try to do that, you know, as our, the council as is right now, we try to do that by having our meetings, keeping them open, listening to our residents, listening to what they want, going door to door, talking with people, you know, and not being negative and not, you know, not forcing our opinion on them and just kind of listening. And, you know, so I don't know if I've reached across any aisles, but I try to listen to people and if they disagree with my opinion, that's fine, you know, I'll listen to them and I'll listen to their opinion and, you know, and maybe they have good points and maybe I can change my mind, but, and I'll do the same with them and I'll let them know what I think. So, I think it's just keeping open communication and being considerate and a good listener and, I mean, that's how you, you know, make our, keep our city moving forward, that's what I would say.
So, I think we have done a good job of actually coming together and connecting. For the first time, I've seen actually people, I believe 696 pretty much can separate the city. There's like quadrants where the city is separated. And I've seen candidates actually come, go south of 696 and reach out to the residents there. So, I think I have seen some kind of shift in our communication and how we're all working together. Me, for instance, I'm not afraid to go north or south, east or west. So, I'm just, you know, trying to make sure we're all, feel like we're all together. This is a family-oriented neighborhood and I want to keep it that way. And so, that's how I feel how we've necessarily went, reached across the aisle. I've sent information to everyone and I don't discriminate.
Yeah, I'll kind of echo Saleem's comments, is the way you reach across the aisle is to listen. You know, listen to what people have to say. I've done, like I said, COVID kind of stopped the town halls, but I, in the first two and a half years on council, I did over 20 town halls, went to people, a lot of those, I think about 15 of those were in people's homes. Where people came and, you know, it was not always pleasant, you know, so, but you, but you listen and you try to respond, you try to answer their issues, which is actually one of the things that I enjoy most about being on council is working with residents and trying to help solve their issues. But, you know, as I said earlier, listen and have conversations. But I see Beau standing over there, we stood at a concert, you know, for an hour behind the dumpster, which smelled awful, but we still kept talking. And it was a very cordial conversation with, as I said earlier, with an exchange of ideas. You have to listen to what people are saying and respond accordingly. So, you know, just continue to listen, everybody has my email and phone number, like I said earlier. So, contact me if you have anything.
So, I think, again, open lines of communication is key here. Keeping that a two-way street, giving information and gaining information is crucially important. Also, you know, we've mentioned listening, but what good is listening if no action is taking place too? So, really taking action on some things that you have taken in if the action is deemed necessary, right? Obviously, we can't act upon everything, but those key points that arise to the top. If more and more people are complaining or about a certain topic, then that's clearly a signal that something should be done about that topic, so.
How's everyone feeling so far? Having fun? Ready for the final closing remarks? I think I am too. Candidates, you'll have three minutes for your closing remarks. We're gonna start on this end with Karen, head down all the way to, excuse me, all the way to Jalen and then we'll be closing it out.
Okay. I love Lathrop Village, it was a wonderful place to raise my daughters. I've spent years actively celebrating, promoting and supporting our beloved community. In 1977, we couldn't get a real estate agent to show us homes in Southfield because, quote, "We were going to hell." That meant that the schools were becoming integrated. I saw an integrated community as something positive and we bought a home in Cranbrook Village on the other side of 12 Mile. In 1989, when we needed a bigger house, we looked in Rochester Hills and a lot of other white communities, but we chose Lathrop Village. My daughters attended Southfield Public Schools from preschool through high school whereby middle school, they were in the racial minority. I served for 14 years on the school board of a majority-minority school district, fighting for opportunities for all children. We have had amazing experiences here, sometimes challenging, that we wouldn't have had anywhere else and we love Lathrop Village. And I need to address some things that have been going on. That is why it has been so difficult for me and my daughters to hear the hateful lies that have been spread about me by the mayor, by current city council members, by the city administrator and by others that don't know me. Hateful lies that say I am trying to take Lathrop Village back to her racist times. Hateful lies that go against everything I have stood for for the last 40 years. Hateful lies that destroy a community. I'm not trying to take Lathrop Village back to her dark days. I'm only trying to take Lathrop Village back to the time when we cared about each other, when we respected each other and when we were committed to our community. If you vote for me, I promise to listen, I promise to be responsive, I promise to responsibly spend our tax dollars on agreed-upon priorities. I have no personal agenda or major initiatives to introduce. City leadership has been disconnected from us for a long time. I promise to take the time to listen to all of you and work together to set community priorities that benefit all of us. I'm running with Barbara Canez and Marvin Moore, a write-in candidate. Barb had plans to go out of town before we received notice of the forum this week and as you heard, Marvin is Detroit helping, in Detroit, helping build a home for a homeless family. Our decision to run together is rooted in our shared love for appreciation of Lathrop Village and our neighbors. The diversity in perspectives, knowledge, backgrounds and relationships we each bring as well as our collective experience are well-suited to ensuring that your city council is upholding its duty as an elected body to serve you and all of our residents. We will address the issues, the challenges and the opportunities facing our community with transparency, integrity and your input. We are committed to bringing the focus of city leadership back to you and making sure your voices are sought and heard. heard. Please visit our website, votelv2021.com, to learn more about us and to let us know what matters to you. There's a form you can fill out to let us know what things you'd like us to focus on, and so we hope that we can count on your vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Let's give her a round of applause.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for hanging in there before it starts raining, which is good. I'll just conclude by just saying, you know, I've enjoyed being on city council. I'm honored that I got elected last time, and I'm looking forward to it again. You know, it's all about, for me, it's about helping the community, doing what's best for the community, doing and listening to our residents and doing what they want. And for most people that I talk to, they want to live in a nice community. They want nice roads. They want nice infrastructure. They want progress. They want considered new types of businesses. You know, to me, it's a group, the council, to me, the city council has done a really good job over the last few years. And if you like what we've done, you know, you vote for me. You vote for Bruce. If you don't like what we did, then don't vote for us. I mean, I'm okay with that. But I think we've done a great job, actually, of keeping the city moving forward. Your choice, and, you know, people are going to watch this, right? The choices between people that want to keep the city moving forward and have good initiatives with good infrastructure, and people that don't want that. You know, I think there's some people that just don't want to do it. They don't want to spend the money. They don't want to raise taxes when it's, when doing so would help the community. You know, you got to think about who are the positive people, who are negative people. You don't want toxicity on this council. I mean, I don't want that. And you got to think about all those things. So, in closing, I mean, if, like I said, you know, I think we've done a good job. And if you like us, if you like the job we did, vote for us again. And I would highly recommend you vote for this guy next to me, Greg Ruvalo, who's running in that second seat for that two-year term. No, I'm serious, because he's here, and his opposition is not here. And, you know, and he's done a great job with being here, and he's got a ton of great ideas. So, and, you know, Jalen is very strong as well. I like all his ideas, especially his environmental, his solar ideas, which are great. And I would definitely push for Bruce again. I mean, he's the only guy I know that goes to every single house in this community every election time. And he talks to people. He meets them. He's a tireless worker. Plus, he's retired, so he can spend all his time doing this. So, that's kind of what I'll conclude on. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Saleem. One more round of applause. Greg, you're up.
Thanks, Saleem. So, in closing, I'm a connector and I'm a networker. I take great pride in fostering strong relationship with residents and with small business owners within our shared community. This promotes the sense of hometown pride and cohesiveness. So, it's time for me to rely on those relationships to keep Lathrop Village thriving and moving forward. I feel my vision for the city is positive, sustainable, and most importantly, achievable. So, in 1923, our land was starting to be organized by our founders. So, 30 years later, in 1953, we were incorporated and our charter was installed. Over the years, we have become a very vibrant and very diverse community with a population of 4,088 residents in 1,708 houses. I love those, I love those facts. We need to acknowledge the historical and immediate past in order to move our city forward. However, we should not dwell on the past. We need to focus on the future in order to make Lathrop Village among one of the top cities people look for when buying a house or wanting to establish a business. Finally, I know there's a lot of work that needs to be accomplished within our city. I'm ready to accept the role of city council member. I'm ready to lead with a vision and an open mind. I'm ready to work alongside my fellow council members in a bipartisan way for the good of the city and the residents. Of course, I'm ready to listen, and I'm ready to be proactive and take action. I'm ready to move Lathrop Village forward as a progressive, sustainable, and attractive community. So, this is why I ask you to fill in the bubble. Don't forget that. Fill in the bubble and write in Ruvalo for the two-year term on November 2nd. For more information, you can go to meetgregruvalo.com, and I have a trunk full of yard signs. Please stop by and get one on your way out. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for being here today and for sticking it out, and thanking our hosts and all the candidates. My name is Mark Dizik. I'm on the ballot for a four-year term. I consider myself to be aspirational and pragmatic, and I promise to be accessible and transparent and kind and considerate and respectful to our city and where we've come from and where we're going, and put us in the best position possible. So, long-term residents are proud of the legacy that they leave, and the people that are new to our city feel like staying. So, thanks again for your time. Vote for Mark Dizik on November 2nd.
All right. Just a couple of comments before I get into my closing. I think it's no secret that Ms. Miller and I are not best friends and have different views, but she sends us a lot of emails and, you know, on the...
No one responds to you.
All right. I want to remind you guys, you know, keep your closing remarks to yourself, and please don't interrupt.
And the, all right, well, then I'll just go move to my closing remarks. So, first, I'd like to thank the other candidates who attended tonight. I know we all had short notice, but being on city council often requires last-minute meetings and the unfortunate changing of plans. So, I thank you all for attending. I've lived my entire life in our community, and I have a desire and a passion to see Lathrop Village grow and succeed. As a young retiree, I also have the time and energy to roll up my sleeves and do the work. On top of my city council and planning commission responsibilities, I worked 40 hours a week for two years developing road proposals, and then pivoted to work on a similar effort to improve our water and sewer systems. Because I have no aspirations to run for any higher office, I'm comfortable making hard and sometimes unpopular decisions. I enjoy interacting with residents, and as I noted earlier, I've done over 20 town halls, most of them in residents' homes, and also have done a variety of multi, multiple informational videos where I've demonstrated the importance of communication and the ability to present confusing topics in a very straightforward manner. I love working with the residents. In fact, that's probably my favorite thing about the job. I like helping them resolve their issues, and I almost always respond to residents the same day. I'm proud of my accomplishments over the last four years, and I look forward to moving our city forward over the next four years. Please help me to do that by voting for Bruce Cantor for city council on November 2nd, and thank you all for coming today.
Jalen, you're up last.
All righty. The best for last. So, thank you for APIA for hosting this event. Let's give them a round of applause first. So, again, I am Jalen Jennings. It was a pleasure being here before you all and letting you all know my platform. Again, my top three priorities are strengthening our economy, sustainable environment, and as well as accountability. I just want to let you know, to remind you, that I have already started with innovative ways to reach out to you and reach all of Lathrop Village. So, I have already taken into account those things, and I'm looking to the future. I just want to let you know, I am the future of Lathrop Village. I'm here. I'm rooted. I'm invested here. So, I may be young, but I have the drive. I have the energy, and I have the spirit to get this job done. So, I just want to leave you all with that, and hopefully, you will make your best vote, best choice, November 2nd, and have a great evening. Thank you so much.
Once again, my name is Bilal Hamood. I've been your moderator this afternoon. I want to thank you again, and thank APIA Vote and Michigan United for making this possible and welcoming us to your beautiful town. So, one more time, a round of applause for all the candidates who came out here today and offered us their time, and all the residents who attended as well. Thank you, guys. Thank you.